Good evening. I would like to call the Finance Committee to order. We have four items on the agenda. The first is approved of minutes of December 21st, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number two, resolution for correction of 2020 bid taxes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I would just like to comment, it was a correction for three different properties in the bid that should not have been assessed, or if there's any questions, I'm here.
Okay, any questions for Jeff? Okay, we have a motion on floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, we have a resolution accepting financial donation to police department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. If I could, number three and number four are both financial donations to the police department. Number three is a $25 donation made by Jean Schneider, and we are requesting that money be re-appropriated to the police department's crime prevention account to be used for crime prevention programming and supplies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Chief? Okay, all those in favor for item number three?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, do we have a motion for, or I'm sorry, number four. Item number four, resolution accepting financial donation to police department.
And that's a $100 donation from John and Mary Bartle, and we request that be re-appropriated to the police department crime prevention account to be used for crime prevention program and supplies.
Second.
Any questions for Chief on item number four? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
And good evening. Our call to order, the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for January 18th at 6:30 PM. Notice that all aldermen are present with Alderman Kennedy absent and excused. Please rise for the posting of the colors.
Three's end.
Arm.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Arm.
Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two.
Thank you so much, gentlemen, for doing that for us. I'll note that we have 20 items on our agenda, first being the State of the City. Members of the Common Council, administration, department heads, along with the many business owners, residents, and visitors of our great city, thank you for allowing me time to deliver my first State of the City address as mayor of our great city of West Bend. There is no doubt in anyone's minds that 2020 was quite a tumultuous year. Thinking back to even just a year ago, an ongoing pandemic was certainly not predicted, and our local, state, and national economies were roaring forward. While we can certainly sit here and reminisce about the good old days or bury ourselves in pessimism, I'd much rather focus on the wins and successes of our city and the wonderful opportunities to come. First off, I would be remiss if I didn't begin by thanking the residents of our city for having the confidence to elect me last year. Growing up in this city, this has always been the place that I called home and where I knew I wanted to create a lasting impact to improve the community I love and choose to raise a family in. While this past year has certainly been trying, I hope Westbenders know me as someone who continues to push forward with a smile on his face and carry the flag of optimism into the future. As promised on the campaign trail, a new strategic plan for the city of West Bend has been developed, and I'm happy to share, fully endorsed by our council. This framework acts as a simple and measurable way to filter ideas and projects to build better consensus and move us forward. As is the case on any board, we are made up of differing personalities, experiences, interests, and drives, but together, we share the same value of continuing to see the city of West Bend succeed. I'm confident the strategic framework can help us achieve this. I'll now use these strategic priorities to highlight what we've achieved thus far and what is to come. Public safety, year after year, continues to be cemented as our largest budgeted expense. This financial backing proves that here in West Bend, we will not be defunding the police. Police, fire, and EMS calls in 2020 addressed a combined more than 18,000 calls and participated in numerous other protection and service-related activities. Hundreds of hours of training were completed to maintain up-to-date procedures, and our men and women continually step up to cover overtime and additional shifts. With upcoming purchases of body camera equipment for police and reviewing our operations with a consultant for the fire department, we continue to prove time and time again that we value the public safety sector and their time and their efforts. I'd like to take this moment to say thank you to the men and women who wear these uniforms. If we can give them a round of applause. Another big thank you should be delivered to our clerk staff. Also, under the guise of public health and safety, we use CARES Act funding to assist in the relocation of the clerk's office to be more front-facing and welcoming to the public. This transition greatly aided in the processes and steps taken to securely and safely orchestrate three successful elections all throughout the COVID pandemic. Let's thank them for their ongoing work as well. The pandemic did little to slow down our economic residential development. Our team continued to push through 2020, securing large grants and capital for Tiff District projects, advocating for and revitalizing historic downtown and Barton districts, and enticing new and exciting businesses to grow, just to name a few that have been completed or in the works. Taco Bell, Title Max, Dunkin' Baskin Robbins, Comer expansions, Skinny Vicks, The Oak and Hog, Dairy Queen, Marriott Town Place Suites and Water Street Suites, Milwaukee Tool, the new West Bend Manufacturing Center, and we can't forget three new Quick Trips. In addition to this growth, many residential, commercial, and industrial businesses filtered projects through our development team, and West Bend has been proud to continue to grow our way past obstacles rather than to falter. The many people who highlight this goal should be thanked for their continued service as well. One more round of applause. Road conditions and infrastructure are a pain point for many who drive our streets. Every alderman here, past and present, understand the fielding of phone calls from constituents who hope for more to be done with less. We can thank our predecessors for the strong fiscal discipline that have afforded us the ability to now do more without faltering from that fiscal discipline. Numerous road projects were taken on this past year, with addition to crack filling, sealing, and collaboration with utilities, spending $2 million on these operations. In 2021, we'll see work begin on much-requested Seventh Avenue, the reconstruction of Forest Avenue, along with new development, in addition to numerous small projects. In total, $5 million will be expensed this year on our ever-improving road system. Alongside the completion of a county-led infrastructure plan, much work will be done in 2021. Finally, we have continued to embrace those projects that elevate our quality of life. The west side of the Riverwalk and Carl Cuss Field projects continue to push ahead in funding and development. Programs through Parks and Rec, the library, and Lachlan Conservancy continue to inspire youth and adults alike. And progress with the new library recreation center, All Abilities Playground, and newly endorsed pedestrian bike loops all prove that we continue to invest in the culture and amenities our municipal neighbors will want to seek West Bend out for. While it is easy to be caught up in the pessimism of the outside world, here in the city of West Bend, we are moving forward with tremendous positive steps. The state of our city is strong. We have been blessed with the economic fortitude to persevere, we have invested in and strongly support our public safety divisions and the rule of law, and we continue to provide economic and recreational wins that encourage people to want to visit, work, and live in our great city. I am honored to be mayor of such a city. We, as a council, should be proud of our community and the work that we get to do day in and day out. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all who serve the great city of West Bend. Thank you so much. And speaking of public safety, where could I take items number two through seven, which are the oath of office for our police officers?
I, Lauren E. Bresser.
I, Lauren E. Bresser.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city. Thank you.
If you're Lauren's badge on, I'll just briefly introduce you to her. I'll briefly introduce you, or her, to the community. Lauren graduated from Sheboygan North High School. She then attended Lakeshore Tech where she obtained her associate degree and completed her 720-hour required state state recruit school. She then started as a police officer with Elkhart Lake, lived there for the summer and into the fall, and joined the West Bend Police Department late the year. She's been on for a short time, so welcome, Lauren.
I, Jordan P. Dolzall.
I, Jordan P. Dolzall.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
I'll introduce Jordan to the community as I finish badge on. Jordan attended West Bend West High School. While he was attending West Bend West, he joined the West Bend Police Explorers. He stayed in the unit while he was in high school and early college. He obtained his associate degree from Waukesha County Technical College and then attended Milwaukee area attended Technical College, when he graduated in May. He received a certificate in state recruit school. Attended that graduation. We have two other members that are being sworn in tonight. Attended, Jordan Brown to say was the number one academic student in that class. Congratulations.
I, Aaron P. Heinz.
I, Aaron P. Heinz.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Aaron's badge on, I'll briefly introduce you. Aaron went to West Bend East High School. He attended Marion College where he obtained his bachelor's degree, graduated, was bachelor in May of 2020. He then joined Jordan and our next candidate at Milwaukee area Technical College for state recruit school, graduated in December. Proud to tell you, as I said, Jordan was number one academically in the class, Aaron was number two in that class, but Aaron not just got one silver medal, he got a second silver medal, he was number two also academically, and I'm proud to say, as a person that finished number one, you're going to meet shortly. Failed to mention when Jordan was up here, both Aaron and Jordan also have been community policing officers with us for the last three years, and they certainly proved themselves during that time, and I hope they do a great job as officers.
Thank you.
I, Garrett M. White.
I, Garrett M. White.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
The State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
Garrett went to West Bend West High School. Our third candidate, attended West Bend High School. At our high school, he went to the University of Wisconsin-Ashgash where he obtained his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. After graduating in May, he joined the West Bend Police Department as a community service officer, served in that duty up until January, when he was promoted. He went to recruit school, Milwaukee area Technical College with Jordan and Aaron, and as I said, very proud of the three West Bend candidates. I just told you, we had one gold medal for number one in the class, two silver medals for number two in the class for academics and physical fitness, and Garrett was, I guess by now, number one in physical fitness. So, West Bend kind of swept the podium.
I, Kevin Arvall.
I, Kevin Arvall.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the State, of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge, discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
And our three past candidates, if you just swear, West Bend High Schools. Kevin's going to come from a little different background. He was Penn High School, and I gotta look at my notes here. How do you pronounce it? Oh, okay, yeah. Nishawaka, Indiana. After he completed his high school, he went to Ball State where he had a chance to compete for the physical fitness award at NCC, but I'm sure he would have been one of the top three, division one scholarship to play football at Ball State. So, obviously, physically fit. After he went to Ball State, he had a couple jobs, and then joined the Chicago Police Department where he worked for three years. For those that are wondering how he ended up in West Bend, in November, he married Deborah, who is from West Bend, and as every good husband knows, happy wife, and so he followed her to West Bend, living in the West Bend Police Department. And I want him to know, he did a very thorough background investigation, I can assure you that Kevin is not a Bears fan. He's not a Packers fan yet, but he will be in two weeks.
Raise your hand. I, Molly Jalen.
I, Molly Jalen.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
As police officer.
As police officer.
In the city of West Bend.
In the city of West Bend.
Washington County.
Washington County.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upset office.
Upset office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the city.
If I can, Molly's badge on, I'll introduce her to the community. Molly went to the Berlin Hill West High School. Graduated. After graduation, she attended Waukesha Area Technical College where she obtained her associate degree last May. She then attended state basic recruit school at Waukesha Area Technical College, graduating in December. Prior to coming on the police department, Molly worked with autistic children, earned that title, she was a major technician, and I'm sure those skills were carried over to the department. One of the things I failed to mention, when we had our candidates up here talking about their physical fitness, three of those candidates that are up there played football. I already told you, Kevin, we know that he probably is Garrett. One thing you probably wouldn't guess, but I will tell you, was Lauren was on her high school football team, one of the very first females in the state of Wisconsin. And Molly was, when we did our physical fitness testing, she was part of our recruitment. She was number one in a number of categories, including the mile and a half, and so I can guarantee it to you that it was very physical. And if I could just say a couple quick words, you know, we normally have the candidates' families and friends here for this night because of the present COVID situation, ask them not to crowd the room, and we don't have the normal celebration that we would. We welcome them to participate tonight from home. I want to welcome and thank those family members for supporting their sons, daughters, husbands, wives, fathers, and mothers here, and they certainly trust me that we will take care of them here on the police department, and we need and want your support, not just for them, but for all of us. So, thank you for participating tonight.
Thank you so much, Chief, and thank you to those officers who are stamping up for the city of West Bend. We appreciate it. It sounds like you have great impressive resumes, both in academics and physical fitness, so we look forward to having you aboard. Thank you. And with that, I will move on to item number eight, approval of the minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes for January 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I'll give that one to Alan. Who is the second? All right, perquest, sounds good. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And if I could have a motion to consent the agenda consisting of items nine through eleven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Muddel, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. On to agenda items for consideration, number 12, cooperative service agreement between the city of West Bend and the Department of Agriculture Wildlife Service to perform deer management services. And Mr. Hinch, take it away.
Sounds good, thank you. We are requesting permission this evening to hire the USDA to conduct deer herd reduction activities. The recommendation from the deer committee is to reduce the deer herd by 60 deer in Bicentennial Park, Lachlan Conservancy, and for the first time in Regner Park this year. The deer committee reviewed and discussed the UAV surveys that occurred, was it December, January of this year? Also, they reviewed the deer versus vehicle accidents, where those occur in the city of West Bend. They also looked at, because this would be the third consecutive year for this agreement, the activity and the harvesting numbers from the last two years, and tried to balance things out a little bit as to where the deer issues might be. The deer versus vehicles is a pretty good indicator, and those numbers kind of aligned with the drone surveys that we did. So, it's all good information. It's good that we're gathering that information. Several weeks ago, we were here talking about the surveys. It's good to have that, the information from the police department. Obviously, our residents really certainly let us know where these deer are certainly causing some issues. So, the cost of the program this year, if it is approved, would be $14,849. All deer harvested will again go to the food pantry for distribution, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes, sir.
It sounds like it's a little more than it was last year, cost-wise?
Actually, last year was $16,243.
I had $9,000 in my head.
Last year, we worked on several other properties, so they were baiting on other properties, moving tree stands around back and forth, so more labor was involved. This year, we're going to focus on three or four different properties, and one property I did not mention was a county property over on Schmidt Road, because that herd, or those deer and the Lachlan deer are about the same. I mean, it's probably the same herd, so less moving around for their staff members. So, that's going to keep our costs down a little bit. And the quote that they have, the $14,894, they cannot charge more than that. Even if their costs are above and beyond that, they cannot charge additional for that, that's a fixed cost.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
When you said fixed cost, is that a not-to-exceed or a fixed cost?
I'm sorry, it's a not-to-exceed, yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, nope, good question.
Anything else? Otherwise, you're looking for a motion, Craig Mc?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Dolnick, if there is no other questions or comments, all those in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
And number 13, polling place locations for the February 16th, 2021 spring primary and the April 6th, 2021 spring election. Steph?
Thank you. I was just asking for the February and for the February spring primary and the April spring election, that we keep the polling locations as they were. District one would move to Washington County, and District eight would be here at West Bend City Hall, as they were for the last three elections that we have had under a pandemic. We just had training yesterday, not yesterday, last Friday, from the Wisconsin Elections Commission, that's when they had first said that everything is going to be the same for the next two upcoming elections as they were for the last three. So, that's why I'm requesting to have them pulling locations, to stay at them locations for both elections, so I don't have to come back again.
Sounds good.
Second.
Thank you, Kayla and Alan. Any questions for Steph? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The two locations that are being moved, Stephanie, the district eight and district one, is that because the locations where they typically poll have restrictions based on COVID?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, all those in favor, so signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. And moving on to 14, ordinance to amend the 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of West Bend, Wisconsin for a change in the recommended land use for approximately one acre of land located immediately east of North Main Street and north of Washington Street at 415 North Main Street from transportation and commercial to mixed use and park and recreation by the Department of Development. And we have a presentation by Jim Ranky, our business development planner. Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm just asking the council for consideration to a comprehensive plan change. We're requesting to change the land use for that area from the commercial to the mixed use. This is to help facilitate the redevelopment of that area. The next item on the agenda that we'd have too is also coordinated with this for the actual zoning change. Again, this is just to help facilitate with the redevelopment of that area for that one acre.
Sounds good. Any questions for Jim?
Yeah, is there any need for a public hearing or was the planning commission adequate?
Yeah, the public hearing was held at Plan Commission on January 5th. We had one person that commented on it, but there was no objections to the change in land use or the zoning.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alan and Muddel. If there's no other questions, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And move on to 15, which is an ordinance to rezone approximately one acre of land located immediately east of North Main Street and north of Washington Street at 415 South Main Street, tax key 1119.114.0031 and 1119.114.0033 from B2 Central Business District to MXD Mixed Use District by Chris Schmidt. Anything else on this, Jim?
No, this is actually just establishing that zoning from the commercial and light industrial to the MXD, which is consistent with the developments of the north and also across the Milwaukee River.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alan and Model, then Alderman Dolnick.
Isn't that North Main Street?
Yes. Was there a typo on the?
Everything says South Main Street. I just noticed that.
Okay. No, it should be. That's a typo error that we have. It should be North Main Street.
I feel like that was on our Plan Commission. Packed it like that too.
I believe it was, yes.
Copy and paste, darn. All right. Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Thanks, Jim. All right. And number 16, Health Insurance Review Committee. So this stems from our 2021 budget conversations. It came pretty clear that our council wanted to kind of explore some options with our health insurance. I know we started to tackle that last year, but it kind of got down to the wire with our budget, and we needed to pass something. We did make some modifications, but I still think that this is worthwhile to take a look at. So I'm asking that we create a Health Insurance Review Committee just to highlight big-picture discussion overview of plan, just solicit feedback. On this committee, I have Alderman Dolnick and Kennedy, our city of West Bend HR Director, Michelle Hui, the CFO of Epicrative, Lisa Pence, and the Health Insurance Benefits Consultant with Richards Insurance, Tim Jizorsky. And again, the intended purpose of this committee is they're not going to be crafting a new plan for us, but really just getting some outside feedback to look at our current situation and give some ideas, thoughts, and feedback to administration to carry on into spring and summer as we develop our next budget. So the committee itself doesn't need, there's no formal requirement to have committees blessed by the council, but I did recognize with how public this discussion was during the last budget cycle, I did find it appropriate to update the council on these steps. So I'll open up if there's any questions. Jay and Michelle might be easier to answer it as well. I think I saw Model first.
Sure. I'm just like, I'm sorry, we didn't talk about this beforehand, but would there be a downside to having a city employee on this committee as well?
No, and we tried to contemplate what was the right size for that committee and who to include. I think as my intended purpose of this committee would be to have, again, that outside feedback. I don't know if that's the right time to have an employee included on that. And then if you do, I'm not sure how we would pick that employee, because I know there's discussions amongst, you know, what do we do? Fire union and police union? And, you know, those that aren't represented as well. And then we start to get to a larger body of people that have to meet throughout this. But I mean, I'm open to that feedback if it's really the desire of the council. But I think for now, this is a good size. Jay, I don't know if you wanted to respond to that anymore?
Well, Michelle is a city employee as the HR Director. And I will be in attendance at those meetings as well if that's helpful for the council to know.
Alderman.
Yeah, could you go over the who is going to be on the committee again?
So two Aldermen, Dolnick and Kennedy. Our HR Director. Lisa Pence is the CFO and deals with the health insurance for Epicrative. They're a pretty good-sized company here in the city. And then the Health Insurance Benefits Consultant for Tim, I'm sorry, for Richards Insurance. And that was that Tim Jizorsky.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alderman Dolnick.
And I understand that Michelle, I understand your point that Michelle is a city employee. I had had the same concern that, and I understand that the committee is not going to make decisions, obviously. That's for the council to make. However, the committee is going to gather information, and I assume, report to the council. And as your memo indicates, present options, pros and cons. So that's why I believe that we should have someone from the rank and file, not a department head, on the committee. I think that an awful lot of city employees, for most city employees, health insurance is a major issue in some regards, maybe even more than the salary is because of the potential for the deductibles and the premiums. And I think it just looks better for them to have confidence in what the committee is doing as if there is someone in there. Alderman Kennedy had, I had expressed this to Alderman Kennedy and the mayor and the city administrator. Alderman Kennedy looked upon this as a, well, if we add a city employee, then we have to add someone, again, from another person from the private sector. And I, that might be because I had used, I had phrased it as a balance. And I don't know that we have to have X number from private sector, X number from public sector. But I think we should have at least someone from the rank and file on the committee.
Thanks. I'll go to Burke West first, since you already talked.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to reiterate the fact that you saw six police officers sworn in here tonight. Okay, there's a reason why that number is so large. Okay, is that we need to include the employees in what's going on with their benefits and their involvement. Okay, the fact that there are so many, and I know I've been a police officer here for 20 years, and the numbers were usually not that large. Okay, there's a reason for that. Whether people are going elsewhere, where benefits may be different or better or more. But we as a body need to take that into consideration. And when we form committees to understand what's going on, to eliminate that group of people, even if it's just a discussion, you know, their input is important. And the fact that we include them in it is also very important. And it goes a long way for the credibility of the committee. Thank you.
Alderman.
We just did a strategic plan. And yes, we included city employees, but they were only department-head city employees in that process. I would be much more favorable to this proposal if it did have someone from the rank and file. And I would suggest the following, that anyone who's interested has until someday, be it Wednesday or Thursday, to make their interest known. The names go into a hat. Thursday or Friday, they select out of that hat the person who will represent the rank and file. Is that acceptable?
It's a little haphazard, but Alderman Kayler.
Just a question, do we not consider Michelle a city employee?
She's not a rank and file. She's a department head. I mean, Jay's a city employee. There are already a number of city employees. There's two Aldermen. They're city employees. But there's not rank and file representation?
So just to be clear about the process. So I don't need an approval by the council to create this committee, but I didn't want to make sure that I got that feedback. So if it is the opinion of the committee to include somebody from our city staff beyond department heads, I think Jay and I already floated a couple of names that we can entertain with that as well. So I'm willing to, you know, respect that decision. And I agree that, you know, getting that feedback from that level, you know, isn't a bad thing. It's definitely good to hear from their opinions as well. So we can loop that in with the five, six-ish people that we have currently. Jay, can you talk about the timeline we kind of envisioned for this?
Well, sooner than later, from the big-picture health insurance discussion would be helpful for any inclusion in a 2022 budget. The one wild card timeline factor that we really won't know until the committee has a chance to meet, form, and, you know, discuss their goals regarding the review. But is the idea of the state plan? That I'm hoping for a first-quarter review of this group. And I think that's reasonable to have that concluded with a few meetings in the first quarter of 2021. What might not be completed by that time, what won't be completed by that time if we enter into a full-blown exploration of the state plan, the timing of that just might not work. So ideally, I think this is wrapped up by mid-March, the review from the committee and a report back to council at the first meeting in April. And if we're knee-deep in looking further into the state plan